I'm going to call this meeting to order with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call vote, Casey Barney here, Lee Sharps here, Harold Lamos here, Fran Newton here. I'd like to announce that Tasia Singa Schivilingam resigned. He sent us an email on January 7th. Okay, public comments. We have two people on the list. Martine, you want to talk about the groundwater ordinance?
Yes, just very briefly. I know this is going to be on the one of the warrant articles, but just to give you, make sure that you do all have a copy of the proposed ordinance.
Thank you.
The groundwater ordinance was developed by a representative committee from, with members from the planning board, zoning board, water and sewer commission, conservation commission, along with, working with Mike Bizard at Lex Reacher Planning Commission. It is an ordinance that will become part of the zoning ordinance, and its purpose is to protect our groundwater source, in particular, the well field and some of the surrounding area. The surrounding area that it does protect is an area that's been identified by DES and by Emery and Garrett, who geology concerned, as the area of most importance to the well area. It is, it grandfathers the existing uses in that area. This only adds a layer when someone comes in with a new use or an expanded use within that area. It just gives some extra steps to go through with the site review process that looks at how stormwater practices are dealt with and how any petroleum products and contaminants, other contaminants are stored, such as with impervious surface, sheltered, sealed containers, and so on. So it just gives a few extra things to consider when we're doing a site plan review. Primarily, and as I said, it is to protect the groundwater sources. Important to note that we, Ashland is part of a, one of the larger aquifers in the state. It's actually over 90 square miles. 2.7 miles, square miles of that aquifer are within the Ashland area. It is one of the largest, one of the richest aquifers, and we do need to protect our drinking water. That's the primary purpose. This ordinance, with, if, with this ordinance passage, that would put us in a group of over 60 percent of the committees in the Lex region area that have groundwater ordinances.
Okay, thank you, Martine. We may call on you when we have a select board discussion about the warrant article itself, if people have additional questions about it.
And just the copies of the ordinance are on the website. They will be at the deliberative session. There will also be copies available at the town office.
Okay, thank you very much. Kathleen DeWolfe?
If, when you come to the discussion about the banners, I have the original information, if it can be helpful. I will, I will try to answer any questions of the documentation that I have.
Okay, thank you. Steve Felton? Welcome back, Steve.
I just wanted to take a minute to just communicate some thoughts on one of the warrant articles that you'll likely be discussing today, and that's the community-based rights organization ordinance. And I just want to say that I've seen the kind of brief write-up of what that is, and having read the brief write-up and then read the entire nine-page document, that slight description does not in any way give you a true understanding of what that ordinance implies. And having read the nine pages and gone through it pretty carefully, just my personal opinion would be number one, you know, it's up to each individual voter to decide if they want to vote for it or not, but you need to read that nine pages to really understand what you're voting for. Having done that, my personal opinion is that, having read through it, I don't know how to put this in any way other than saying it's, it's, to me, it's irrational, it's impractical, many pieces of it are quite frankly illegal, and it will most likely be a very costly decision because you're literally changing the way we govern the town, and you're basically saying most state and federal rules and regulations don't apply, and that's simply not reality. No, that's just my thought.
Thank you, Steve. Anybody else that didn't sign up? Okay, in that case, we have approval of minutes. The first are from Tuesday, January 2nd. Are there comments, corrections?
I didn't have any on that one.
I had a few. On page three, line five, it says guidelines for ethical conduct of public officials tabled for next work session. I think we just tabled it without specifying when or if it would be discussed.
Right.
And then paragraphs starting at line 12, the last sentence, it says, "She added that a draft Board of Selectmen report will be emailed to the town hall shortly." What I did was ask if there were any comments in my draft. There having, having been no comments, I would then forward the report to the town hall.
And that's page three, line 12?
That's line 16, where it says, "She added that a draft Board of Selectmen report will be emailed to the town." I first asked with the board if there were any comments, and receiving none, that I would then send it to the town hall. Anything else?
Yeah, that line 12.
Same page?
Same page.
Yep.
The Board of Selectmen determined that engineers, not TA and Smith.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Line 26, I believe the board reconvened at 7:40, prior to leave, mentions it prior to leaving TA Smith.
Right.
Right, so line 26, page three, the board reconvened at 7:40. So it has to state that they came out of non-public.
Yeah.
They entered at 7:36 and...
Reconvened at 7:40?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? In that case, oh, sorry.
Hold on, I thought there was page two. I think it should say, what was it, line 42, "This proposed ordinance would preempt the existing state statute and could interfere with the Board of Selectmen's future rights to manage town property."
Okay.
Towns, the boards.
Yep. Is that it? Okay, in that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
There's a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, January 9th. I just had one question. Articles three and four, we don't list a vote. Didn't we vote on those at the meeting to approve?
I think you did. Let me check. I thought you voted previously.
Oh, maybe we did.
You did vote previously, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 4-0 and 4-0.
Okay, good, thank you. That's, that's the only thing I had. Anything else?
Or did you vote that night? I can't remember.
No, I think they did it previously.
Yeah.
I have a couple things.
Okay.
At the top of that page, two of three, about Article three, TA Smith replied there was concern, da-da-da-da. Selectmen Sharps asked if there was assurance, it's actually, I asked assurance that the customers trucking to the new septic station would be increased to help with the cost, not that it wouldn't be charged more than in the past.
Right.
It was the opposite. And Mr. Tauch answered that the rates would stay competitive with other septic-receiving stations, and take out the rest of that sentence.
What line is this?
Page two.
Three, four, three, four, and five.
So what do you want to change?
It should say, "Selectmen Sharps asked if there was assurance that customers trucking to the new septic station would be increased to help with the cost."
Right.
Not that it wouldn't be charged more than in the past, take that out.
Right, right.
And that Mr. Tauch answered that the rates would stay competitive with other septic-receiving stations, period. Doesn't need that other wordage.
My comments on page two, to clarify, it should say TA Smith ran an amortization on a 30-year loan and figured it would be about $85,000 a year with a tax impact of approximately $28,000 a year.
Down at the bottom of the page?
Yeah, line 40.
Line 42, because, scratch out, there is at least, it should say because $57,000 in the block grant would be used to offset, right?
Yep.
Permits and engineering plans for this project are valid for five years and in their second year.
Okay.
I think that's important.
Yep.
In their second year.
And it's in the second year.
And it's in the second year.
The second year.
Yeah.
On that same page, up on line 15, where it says, "Water and sewer commissioners make objective decisions and reduce downtime and emergency situations," it just, it didn't make any sense to me.
You're right, it doesn't.
What does that mean? Reduce downtime and, either take it out, just put make objective decisions, period.
Yeah, it doesn't, you're right, it doesn't make sense.
In emergencies? It's supposed to be in emergencies.
In emergencies, yes.
Just take that out. And then I, then I had one more on the last page, whereas I think Jane Se, Jane Sawyer probably would love being called Jane Seymour.
Oh.
Sawyer.
I thought that was kind of...
That's okay, common mistake.
Please go, Sawyer.
And I don't think Jane Seymour could give a brief description of the article.
Probably not. Thank you, Lee. Anything else?
Yeah, that line above, it should be the, the board will, and will be voted on at the Selectmen's meeting.
Voted, right.
Not reviewed.
Yes.
They're going to vote.
Line above what?
Yep.
Right there.
Same one.
Yeah, will be voted.
Voted.
All right. And then on, and on line 14, it's January 2018.
Oh, yeah.
Not 2017. His concern was 2018.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 9th as amended.
I'll make that.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, consent agenda. For the weeks of January 1st, accounts payable, the amount of $234,501, the payroll manifest of $22,845. For the week of January 8th, accounts payable, the amount of $30,855, and the payroll manifest, the amount of $17,288. In addition, we have abatements for balances under $5 off the tax warrant. Total is $19,000, oh, $19.48, I'm sorry, not $19,000.
$19.48.
$19.48. So I will pass those for signature.
I just wanted to comment, I came in yesterday to sign those, and I thought the office was going to be closed because it was Martin Luther King Day, and that our holidays are in line with federal, federal guidelines, and I just wondered what we could do to, I'm sure we didn't have a lot of people come into the office yesterday because of the holiday.
Right.
And I, wondering how do we go about closing our office for that day?
Do we have a policy for what holidays are observed?
Yeah.
And is that one of them?
No.
No.
That wasn't one of them?
No.
Okay, well, something we should think about for the future.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Okay, department head, DPW. Craig, you want to get up and tell us about your computer needs?
Oh, yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
It's just, it's something Charlie and I were...
Can you come over here where you can be seen?
Working on...
Need a loader, a computer.
Well, I can work on, Charlie's forcing me to get one. Anyway, it's, it's from 2007. I think every day I have to shut it off and turn it on, but it's something that was never budgeted for.
Mm-hmm.
But we had money at the end of the year, so we talked to Charlie about getting a new one. So it's from 2007, it's not supported by Microsoft, it just, it's pretty bad. So it's just up in front of you guys, so if you want to let it know.
Well, what exactly does that mean, it's not supported by Microsoft? You can't get a license?
The software is unsupportable.
It doesn't take the updates.
It won't take any updates anymore, and if you go on the Internet to the research part, it just...
Yeah.
Oh, we can't get any of it, I see.
So it just, it's very difficult to use it. Email is almost useless.
Okay.
And I, you know, I have to start it every day to get emails, so.
Okay.
It's not a big, huge deal, but it's something that wasn't put in the budget, so we want to put it in front of you guys.
Okay, any comments?
I guess...
Sorry?
As you say, I guess like the 1980 loader, that if you're dealing with integrated equipment, that it's just slowing you down.
It does.
Yeah.
Lee?
I just wondered if we had, were getting quotes from other places besides Certified Computer Solutions? Or is that who we...
Well, that's our, that's our IT provider.
We did.
Oh, you did, okay.
But this, we, since they service our stuff, this was easier to be on the same page.
Okay.
Because if we went somewhere else, they might, they told us they might not be able to...
They told us they wouldn't support it.
Be able to support it.
Oh, that's nice.
So if there's anything, yeah.
Any other questions?
Whatever.
Comments?
Yeah, well, you couldn't, like, you couldn't buy a Mac or something like that.
Questions, comments, motions?
Where, where are we going to get this from?
Charlie, do we have a, in the budget?
He's going to try to see if it's in last year's budget. If not, it would have to probably be this year's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So our motion would be to take it out of this year's?
Last year's.
Last year's, if we were to do it right now.
Yep, yeah. Yeah, because the invoice was dated before the end of the year.
Okay.
And we're going to have to check with the accountant to see if he can encumber it to pay for it.
Okay.
If not, he's just going to have to take it this year.
Could that come out of his building upkeep line? You mean it's...
I would have to see, yeah, we'd have to see what's there, yeah.
It's been there since '07, that's...
Yeah. But I've already talked to Craig.
Okay.
We've got to make it work. I mean, he needs, he needs a new computer.
Yeah. Can we make contingency motion that we refine the funds and you can update us where they might come, get this from?
That's good.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Contingent upon where the funds will be coming from for a new computer system, approximately $2,325.
I'm going to second that motion.
For DPW.
Any further discussion?
Who said a question?
Yes.
So this is a laptop, is there a desktop?
It's a, it's like a Surface Pro?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that standard for what we have?
Well, we were thinking ahead a little bit on it, because the thought was with the LRPC software that might be coming, that he could actually have it with him in the event that he wants to show the improvement of the roads, the grade of the roads.
Yeah, the new software that we might, we're looking at, it has the ability to mark coordinates for drains.
Yeah, yeah.
Things like that, which were tied to the LRPC stuff, so.
So it's more beneficial to have a laptop as opposed to a desktop?
Yes.
Right. And that was just something that Charlie and I threw out there.
Yeah.
It would be affordable, like, throughout the market.
Yeah.
But it doesn't matter, I mean...
Okay.
Yeah.
No, it makes sense.
Well, it's more beneficial than...
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where CCS is going, honestly, with a lot of their computers, is that route. Because they're, they're capable just as much as the towers, but they're, they're flexible, you know, you can work from home or on the weekends and stuff, still, you know, to complete tasks.
Okay. Satisfied with that?
Yep.
Okay, so all those in favor of approving the purchase of Surface Pro for Public Works in the amount of $2,325, the amount to come from 2017 if possible, but we'll get an update at our next meeting of, you know, how that financing works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Fire Department, I think Charlie, you have the information on that one?
Yep, this is, this is the bill that, we start by saying, we discussed this when we prepared the budget. Chief Heath spoke to this at one of our budget meetings. This is just, this is the bill.
Okay.
And so for what the folks in the audience at home need to know about this, this is gap insurance for our firefighters. This protects our firefighters that might not have insurance otherwise in the event that they are injured on the job, and, you know, they, they wouldn't be out on, was it disability? Deputy, did you want to speak further?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Busky's here.
Bob Busky, Deputy Fire...
Yes, thank you, Bob, I'm sorry.
So, obviously, all of our firefighters covered the workers' comp, but that's 66 and two-thirds. This policy covered the other end of that.
Yep.
So they, say a guy's only making $400 a week, he's not going home, he's only $300.
Got it.
He makes up the rest of it.
Okay.
So that's what got insurance.
It's gap insurance.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I don't believe this requires a motion because it's in the budget. Is that, this is just for information?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
But it's over the amount, so generally you guys vote on those.
So what, what is the amount here?
Thirty-three...
Three...
Seventy-three.
Three seventy-three.
Right, so is there a motion to approve this expenditure?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, second? We both second?
Doesn't matter, go ahead.
It's overly seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, Town Administrator Updates.
Tony has.
Oh, Tony, that's something? Sorry.
Update, I've gotten a price from urban owners to move forward with purchasing a cruiser.
Yep.
And I'll just tell you that they came through with some great numbers for us.
Good.
They came through with a price which includes trading the old one in. They gave us $5,000 for trade on that.
Okay.
And the bottom line is the price to buy the cruiser from them with the trade is $26,897.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Which is $1,111 less than the one we bought last year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm working on the outfitting of it, dealing with Ossie Mount Electronics. I think that outfitting, because we're going to take a lot of stuff off the old cruiser to put on for the new cruiser, is compatible. I think that outfit is going to be somewhere around probably $10,000 to $12,000. I haven't got the numbers back from them yet, but I want to get moving on getting the cruiser coming, so I'm here to make sure that I can have authorization from the board to move forward with ordering that.
And we have that money in capital reserve, is that correct?
It is.
Okay.
I think there's about, Charlie and I looked at it, about $58,000 in there.
Wonderful, wonderful.
So I think we're going to end up spending somewhere around $36,000 to $38,000 maybe for this cruiser. Last, last year, the cruiser outfitting and everything cost us, because we were unable to move product over, was $43,060.
Oh, wow, good news.
So I think it's, I think we got a great deal from boroughs, and I just want to make sure that it's okay to order it.
Which vehicle is this replacing, Tom?
It's replacing the black interceptor.
Okay.
It's a 2014, the one we're replacing, but we've actually had it on the road because we, we got it in 2013. So we put it in service in 2013, but it's a 2014 model year, and we're almost up to a five-year span with the thing. And we're starting to have a few issues.
Okay.
We spent some money on it, and it's time for it to go.
Okay. Any further questions?
I just wanted to make sure there isn't anything else that you need at this time, like protective gear or something that we don't know about?
No, right now, we're, we're pretty much set. We did get some plates for active shooter stuff. We ended up purchasing three of those this year, because we didn't have them. And so now, at least each cruiser is equipped with them.
Okay.
You know, the future planning is to get a couple more sets so that each officer has their own, so it's adjusted to them and take it out on patrol. It will go in and out with them on patrol, it's assigned to them. Right now, we have to bring it in, adjust it for themselves when they get ready to go on patrol. So that's future, that's for future, but...
Okay.
And I will tell you that we did get the kits for the, when we respond to overdoses.
Yes.
Okay, and I just want to publicly thank the lady that donated the money to buy that, those items, and it's greatly appreciated.
Definitely, definitely, that's good to hear.
So if I just get a four, and go ahead and order the cruiser, I'll do that tomorrow.
So can I entertain a motion to authorize the expenditure of capital reserve for police vehicle?
I'll do that. All right, I'll second it.
All right, further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Tony, thank you.
And I will be back to you once I get the quote from Ossie Mount Electronics.
Great, thanks very much. Okay, any other department head things?
Well, a comment about the capital reserve funds.
Yes.
By law, we have to send those, the, the articles that were approved at, in March, by law, we have to give the, the approval of the funds to the trustees of the trust funds by December 15th.
Right.
So all of those that approved in March...
Yep.
Were sent to the trustees...
Okay.
...a month ago.
Okay, do we need to have a separate motion to withdraw the funds from capital reserve?
I guess...
You have to send a memo to the trustees.
We would have to do that once he comes back with the final.
Once he gets the fund, okay.
This is, this is how it's happened, this is how it happened last year. Once I get, once the car comes in, then I'm going to give a check.
Yep.
And then I'll come and you guys will approve to expend the funds to purchase the vehicle.
Okay, great. How long do you think before you'll get the car?
I don't know, I didn't talk about that.
Okay.
This is like, you know, I know that it takes about three months or so.
Okay.
And I'd like to keep going on it now so that we can have it by April or May, possibly.
Good.
Because the old, the black one is tired, it's got probably 100,000 miles on it.
Wow, okay.
That's, that's road miles, not engine miles.
Yeah, I got it. All right, thank you, Tony. Any other department heads, before we go on to the TA report? Okay, Charlie?
Okay, so here is first edition of the Town Administrator Update, I guess you could say. You had asked previously for some updates, and I asked the department heads, and have a few for you. Startup of the Fire Department, they responded to 37 calls last month. They had some training on chimney fire operations. They had the paperwork for the Homeland Security Grant. That was, I believe Chief Heath talked to us about that prior.
Yep.
And to purchase the ballistic protective equipment. The pagers have been installed for the personnel. Let's see, and don't hesitate if you have any questions. Parks and Rec's after-school program now has a total enrollment of, enrollment of 36.
Wow, that's fantastic.
That's great.
That's outstanding.
We have one new kid.
Yes, I was just going to say, you need to take an S off the end of that kid.
We have one new kid.
You have one new kid.
Which one's that?
That's great. Second page, Parks and Rec.
Oh, no.
We have one new kid, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And a new person.
Yeah, yeah, new person. Christmas Night Kids Out was, I guess you could say somewhat successful. There's nine kids and Santa showed up. The contracts for the campground have been sent out. I believe we amended that last year.
We did.
And the shed for the beach was finally delivered.
Great.
So it's a new shed. Importantly, from the Electric Department, in case the folks don't know, Superintendent Lee Nichols will be retiring after 25 years of service. They do have a new superintendent in place, Steve Foley. He's been there a couple months, I believe, and they have a new lineman. The town clerk tax collector collected $731,000 in taxes for the month of December. Now, that's a bit high, I think, because people, we had a rush of people trying to pay in advance, thinking that they could deduct it off their taxes after the new federal law went into place.
Which they can't.
Whether or not they can or cannot, I don't know.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
I don't know, but that's...
Yep, got it.
That's why it's a little bit higher.
Wow.
We collected $21,000 in motor vehicle permits, 143 in vital records, and registered a dog.
Okay.
Police, we didn't have reports, but this was new, this was short notice, so hopefully Police, we didn't have reports, but this was new. This was short notice, so hopefully we can get some more information from the other departments.
I think if we just rotate, we don't need every department every time, but it would be nice for, to find out what's going on.
Yep.
Kessley.
Charlie, under Fire Department, the fifth bullet where it says the onboard charger infirter has been installed, is that supposed to say in the utility truck?
Probably. Utility vehicle, yeah.
It just says in the utilities.
I'd assume so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Glad he was here for that.
And in terms of the Electric Department, I think we'd all like to wish Lee Nichols the best in his retirement. We appreciate the many years of service he has given to this town, so we certainly wish him well. Okay.
Project list?
Project list.
Okay, a couple of things. TAP grant was approved by NHDOT and federal government. That's on the agenda.
We're going to discuss more of that later, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So, we'll discuss that shortly.
Mm-hmm.
Thompson Street, we had our public hearing, obviously. We'll just wait till after the deliberative to see if the town votes it through.
Mm-hmm.
The LW Packard Mill, Novus is basically waiting on the results, as it says here. The type of results that they want, they're trying to determine from the test, there's not that many people that conduct those tests, so they said there's a backlog in getting the results.
Ah, I wondered, because they should have completed the work. They're just waiting for the results back. Any estimate as to when we'll get those?
No, Tim didn't say.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
CCF switched over our fiber off the cable today in the office. So, we still have a little bit of a hang-up, I believe you said, at PD. He's trying to get the IP address set up for them.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But the switch was done with the state, so we're rocking it along with that.
Okay. Thank you, Charlie. Any questions, comments on the project list additions? Okay, new business, Ashland Heritage Commission.
I'm going to step down because I'm on a commission.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
We requested to be on the agenda and originally requested to be in the non-public.
Would you like to move to non-public? We can certainly do that if you would prefer. It's, it's your choice. If you feel it's a non-public issue, we can certainly.
Well, I think at this time, we'll just make a statement.
Okay.
We can go into the depth of this at some other time.
Okay.
We're here to express our concerns surrounding the recent noncompliant handling of the Heritage Fund. As Heritage Commissioners, we bear the fiduciary responsibility for the Heritage Fund as defined in RSA's six seventy-four colon forty-four dash A, clearly stating that while the treasurer as custodian of the funds, payments may only be made upon the order of the majority of the Heritage Commissioners. So, in November, the contract for fireworks came through. It was forwarded to us as an invoice. So, it went through the town office, and in the end, a check was cut without it ever coming before us. So, we just wanted to highlight that there was a series of missteps in the whole handling of the process.
Mm-hmm.
We just want to clarify.
Yes.
And in the future, because this has, I mean, the Fourth of July Funds just highlighted this thing.
Yeah.
But in the future, if there's any other funds for any other projects in the Heritage Fund.
Yes.
We don't want the same thing to happen again.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, on behalf of the board, I apologize that this oversight happened. It should not have.
All right. The only other thing, we just want to make a statement that we should still have seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighteen cents left in our account after this transfer to the Fourth of July Committee that's going to happen next.
Okay. Do you still want to have a non-public at the end of this meeting to discuss anything further? It's totally up to you.
No, I guess you have a long enough meeting at this time, but if you want.
Okay.
This is my dossier.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Okay, Fourth of July Committee. Is there somebody that's going to speak to this?
I can start, I guess.
Okay.
So, in your packet, you have the, the budget that we received from Fran Wenderball. There's also the rules of procedure that I believe were pretty much written before, just a few, few changes. Which let me know thoughts, feedback, I guess. And we also have to accept the, the funds.
Yeah.
The thirteen thousand seven ninety-six.
Okay. Any comments on the rules of procedure from the board?
I just had a quick question.
Sure.
It says it's going to be abbreviated as A four J, but then like throughout, it's like A A four J C and then A four J C. I know what the C stands for.
Yeah. I think we need that cleaned up. I mean, this is a marked up copy, so we'd certainly like to have a clean copy with all the corrections made. I just had a couple of questions. I know at one point, a draft that was going around requested that at least one of the officers be an Ashland resident, and I see that that's not in here. And I don't know what the board's thought on that is. Also, I think it should state clearly that they have to comply with all ninety-one A requirements. I mean, they allude to it by, you know, posting of minutes and so forth, but I think there should be a definitive statement that it would comply with all ninety-one A requirements.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Thoughts on the resident piece?
Well, I would like that.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know if it's within our.
Well, it is. We have to approve the committee, and we have to approve these rules of procedure.
So, we could definitively say that?
May I speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Our committee felt that it was not. It is not a requirement of state law. It is a statutory requirement for the Heritage Commission to be, you know, residents. But there is no reason, if you look at some of the main leaders' support of this Ashland Fourth of July celebration over the years, have not been citizens. Many of the businesses that buy banners and advertising are not Ashland businesses. So, we feel to put that restriction, particularly in a time when you have people interested in serving, and many people in Ashland not able to serve.
Mm-hmm.
I will tell you that we do have a resident of Ashland as a member of our Officers Board.
Okay.
And while I am not a resident, I am a property taxpayer. I'm more than one property in this town. I have been involved with the Ashland Fourth of July Parade and Fireworks for a couple of decades, as far as attending and helping in other ways. So, we don't believe it is a necessity to have that requirement in there. We are responsible and reportable to the Board of Selectmen, and so if there's any input that needs to be given, they can give that without us being a resident. As to the ninety-one A, I would have thought that would have been a given and didn't need to be restated since we would be an official committee of the town. So, I have no objection for having this amended and putting that in there.
Okay.
With due process. But I really think that retirement of a resident is uncalled for and unnecessary.
Any other comments, questions? Lee?
Do we have other Ashland members besides the officer? Do we have other Ashland members and businesses?
Yes.
In the, okay. That's fine.
Yes, Harold.
I'm an Ashland citizen who's a member.
Are you an officer?
No.
That was the question.
That was what I did.
Yes.
Member.
No, no. No, I, the original draft I saw was that an officer should be an Ashland resident. I, I certainly hope we have a lot of Ashland residents involved in this because it is an important event and certainly important to our town, but yes.
We do have a lot of Ashland residents that are on the committee, and they're the ones who voted for those officers.
Okay. All right.
To sort of maybe ease your concerns a little bit, what I'd like to recommend is that we appoint our Parks and Rec Director as the liaison with this committee and for the town and the Board of Selectmen.
I think that's a great idea.
I don't have a problem with that. I'm going to be a member of it no matter what.
Well, good. I think having the Parks and Rec involved would be a tremendous idea.
Yeah, yeah. So, she could help out if they need anything from the town, if they have questions that, you know, they might need to get an answer. Or it could be a lot of things.
Yeah.
I think we should bring our Parks and Rec Director in.
Have you spoken with her about this?
Yep.
And she's willing?
Yep.
Oh, I'm, I'm really happy for her.
I have no problem with that. I had five meetings last week.
Okay. That's wonderful.
We discussed it, and we have no problem.
Okay, fantastic.
Yeah.
All right. So, you know, other than if you could just put in a statement about ninety-one A and give us a clean copy with all the corrections, we'd appreciate that.
There was a clean copy that was emailed after that.
Okay. The one I have is all marked up, so.
I'm not sure how you get that.
Oh, I dropped one off.
Okay.
We thought you got this one off.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I decided.
Yes, go ahead.
So, the, just the abbreviation thing?
Yeah, if you could fix the abbreviations to make them consistent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, whatever. In the, in the clean one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks, Fran. You just email it.
Yeah.
If it was. Matter of fact, I think it was, but I'll double check.
Okay. All right. Ash one hundred and fiftieth Committee, banner letter.
Do we need a consensus or a vote to appoint the Parks and Rec Director as the liaison for the Fourth of July?
Oh, that's probably a good idea. All right. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to approve the rules of procedure as amended?
We accept motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, moving on. Did I miss anything?
The budget. Any questions about the budget?
Yeah, I think I'm going to need to spend more time reviewing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, in my cursory glance, it, it looked okay, but I think we really need, what?
You have to vote to accept the.
The budget?
The, no, the thirteen thousand seven ninety-six.
Oh, that, yes. Minor thing.
Don't worry, sorry.
All right. All right. Is there a motion to accept the thirteen thousand, what is it?
Two marks on paper.
Okay.
Seven nine six.
Yeah. For, for the Fourth of July Committee to proceed with the event? Is there a motion?
I accept motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Did I forget anything else? Okay. We do need to approve the budget at some point. I would like to table that till we have a chance to really look at it line by line. Maybe we can do that at our next meeting. Okay. Okay. Hundred and fiftieth Committee, banner letter. Charlie, do you have an update on that? Or Jane? Oh, I didn't think you were coming tonight.
Yeah, I just stuck in.
Yes, okay.
And it has been sent out. I just, I just wanted to make sure. I guess my, my impression was that the board didn't think they knew anything about any of these banners or the procedures.
Well, I think the confusion was that the way this letter reads, it looks like you're just going to put up banners and that businesses have first priority. Our concern, and I think I expressed this to you when you first came to us with this, is that you cannot take down any banner that any business has paid for without their permission and without, you just, you just can't remove things without those. Those people paid for those banners expecting them to stay up. It doesn't matter. They need to know that they're coming down and approve the removal because they have paid for them to go up. They paid money for those.
Right.
And we can't take any down without the business's approval.
Okay, so I guess my, my question is, are the ones that are there, then, so they're there forever, whether the business is still in existence or what? How do we?
No, if the business, we just need to clarify. If you have any intention of taking any of them down and the business is still in existence.
Right.
You do need permission from them to remove them or replace them.
Okay, so I guess my other question is, when, when do the things that are put on these utility poles, who do they actually belong to?
Well, they belong to the town, I believe. Kathleen, please.
And Harold can, yeah.
Yeah.
I always like, you do realize that Norm did this.
Yes, I did, yes.
So, the cost of the, it was a package. It was a banner and the pole kit.
Yeah.
The pole kits cost more than the banner.
Right.
Hmm.
So, it was a package deal.
Mm-hmm.
So, whoever bought the banners, the sponsors owned the banners.
And the pole kit.
And the pole kits, the brackets.
Yes.
Yes. The technical term, I believe, is pole kits.
Yeah.
They also cannot be put on any pole as the Electric Department explained because of sight lines, especially down by Latens, the curb there. The hillside on Riverside Drive.
I, I did meet with the electric company.
And they?
I spoke with them.
Will they put new ones up?
Yes. And, and, well, my understanding is that DPW is actually who put these.
No. Kathleen, please.
Lee Nichols.
Please.
This was before Craig, and this was before the Commissioned and Satist on the Electric Department Commissioners. Now, none of them were there at the time. DPW was originally enlisted until a resident came forward to, and was threatened to put, to call OSHA as a complaint because the men were standing, were being tethered in the front end loader, and that's a OSHA violation. Is that correct?
We, we still help them, but we use the bucket truck now.
So, luckily, the Electric Department with their cherry picker finished it off in a very tight timeline.
Mm-hmm.
This was all gritted out, businesses who had, had first choices where they want them. That was my job, to sit in the car with the chart and make sure every banner was in the place where the sponsor wanted it, and.
I do have that whole list, and I have the map of where they all are. And I did do letters to all the people that have existing ones. They do have complete priority. I will, I.
Well, it's more than just priority. They need permission. Okay.
See, I didn't know I needed their permission because I was, because I was under the impression we're only doing them temporarily. They're all going back out. So, I'll go around to all the ones that do have them, and I think there's a couple of individuals too.
You have permission to replace mine.
Okay. So, I'll make sure, but I want to make sure that all the ones like, for instance, Jeremy Hills has already paid to have his replaced temporarily.
Right.
In all the existing locations that he has.
Perfect.
So, that's what I'll do is if I don't, I will go back to the ones that haven't responded and make sure. You know, like Lisa, Lisa's training, personal training, she's another one that has bought. So, I will definitely do that.
Okay.
So, my question is, though, I spoke to Lee who said that you had already agreed that DPW, so I should be going back to the electric company to put these up?
We didn't agree to that because that would come out of the town budget. I mean, I appreciate Greg, Craig's willingness to pitch in. That's the kind of guy Craig is. But the board did not approve the expenditure of overtime for DPW to put these banners up. So, that was another thing that we needed to work out.
So, we have to overtime even though they're not.
That is an expense for, for the town budget.
But.
So, if you can get Electric Department to do it, that would be preferable because then they're volunteering.
Well, I thought you said that DPW couldn't do it. The way they did it.
The way they did it, couldn't do it.
Equipment. Okay.
Craig says they now use a bucket truck, but even so.
We help them because we have to direct traffic.
Even, even so, you know, we need to make sure that if it's coming out of a town budget, that that money is approved because it's overtime for them. And this time of year, I think they're probably pretty busy with overtime, just guessing. Charlie, any thoughts?
So, it can't be any volunteer assistance or anything like that?
Well, volunteers, if it's using town equipment and town time, overtime, we can't pay them for that without board approval, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, you'd want to, if you want DPW to help you, come back to the board and ask.
Right.
So, I guess the question would be though, too, I should wait until I know how many banners I'm going to have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then come back and talk to us, but see if you can get Electric Department to volunteer their time and, and equipment.
And then the poles, I, I mean, I spoke to the electric, I spoke to Lee, so I should go back to him when I finally have enough.
He's leaving, so we need to.
Well, I know.
Yes.
Whoever the new.
Yeah, exactly.
Then I would speak to them as to any new ones in the locations that they're going to go, to be sure that they're approved.
Right.
Okay.
And, and don't forget, it's, it's double the time because you're taking something down, putting something up, then taking it down and putting something up.
Putting the brackets up.
No, but it's still time to take it down and put it up on the front end and take it down and put it, put up the old ones on the back end.
I mean, do you think it's something we should cancel and send everybody there?
Not necessarily. You know, again, it depends on what people are willing to pay and, and what kind of help you can get.
Twenty bucks, so.
Yeah, well, then, then just find a way to get them up, that's all.
That's really good.
I mean, I certainly don't object to the banners. I think it would be nice. It's, it's wonderful, and I certainly wouldn't object to seeing them up there.
It's about twenty-five percent of your budget I would be turning away.
Yeah, I know. That's the problem. I just, I didn't realize it was going to be such a problem.
Right.
Okay.
Well, I apologize for any misunderstanding, but, but when I saw the letter and it was pointed out to us that, I, I thought we had an understanding that first you had to get permission from the businesses and then.
See, and I just, yeah. Well, I knew we wanted to give them priority, but I guess I misunderstood.
Well, certainly they have priority.
I will contact all of them, yeah. And that's one thing the letter does say, that they, all existing businesses do get priorities on, on locations. So, I will definitely do that.
Yes, Kathleen.
Well, Lee has a question.
Jane, does that mean if an existing business wants to keep theirs there that is already there but wants to buy another one, are there other locations available?
No, our preference is that we replace the existing ones.
Where they are.
We want fifty flags. I think it would look better if they're all consistently one fifty flags if we can.
Okay.
And then when ours come down, those can all go back, and they will get the one fifty one that they're buying, they will get.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Kathleen.
So, there's a total of sixty-three banners purchased when Norm did it.
Yeah.
In a very, very tight window. You and Steve were both on the board when it happened.
Yeah.
You and Steve were both on the board when it happened. The other concern I had, with them coming down, they need to be stored someplace, and then the logistics of putting them back up. I don't believe department... People who work for the Town of Ashland can volunteer their time if they're doing the job they get paid for.
Right.
So, that was, you know, you've got to... They've got to work it within their schedule so that do one, a couple one day, a couple another day, spread it over a three or four month period. It could, you know, it could run into equipment issues, you know, availability, and commence work schedule.
Yeah, no, we understand, and that's why we've asked them to come back when they have, you know, an idea of how many they're going... That are going up.
And these banners mean a lot to me. This was the first project that Norm did. And I was quite shocked, I'd never done anything like that in my life. Very, very successful doing it. As my son came to visit yesterday, he came through town. He spoke about, you know, was the banner still looked good? He said, you know, it was a side of his father that he never saw. So, we reminisced about it and said, you know, it's only been two... They've only been up two years.
Right.
And the project, it was supposed to last until it was deemed, just like the ones they replaced, that they were... They were tattered. They were... They needed to be replaced.
Yeah.
And it was...
I understand.
I believe Jay said at least five years, if not longer. If you don't... You know, they aren't taking it up and down, up and down. And the other thing was that the covered bridge banners were kept up because those were also by donation. And to respect the people who donated the covered bridge banners, those were never removed when the new banners were up.
Yeah. So, we just need to be sensitive to everybody's needs and respect the work that went into it and memories. That being said, I can understand why the 150th would want to advertise for the town. I've gone through other towns that have had banners up. But you might also look into other ways of advertising for the town, within the town, you know?
Right, well, we are doing some other... I mean, we have on our budget, you saw, there are other ways that we're trying to raise funds.
Well, I mean, beyond fundraising. I mean, it's nice when you drive through a town and you see, you know, I gotta put my plates on my car, that, you know, there's something special about this year.
Right, so we are gonna have banners on the different sections as you drive in, that type of thing, on the ground, kind of, yes, as well. And I am sensitive to the fact that, but they... I just, you know, we were looking at just doing flags, and they don't last because of the way that, you know, they're on a pole.
Correct.
The way Main Street is, it's a north wind that comes down through there.
Yep.
So, banners were the most practical and the best fundraiser that may come up.
Understood. Okay. I'm sure we can find a win-win for this.
What, in terms of taking them down and storing them, does anyone have any suggestions as to where I should go with that?
Yes, Craig.
When we take them down, it takes us about an hour and a half to do all of them.
Okay.
We roll them up, and we have a container, we put them over, and so...
Okay, so that's not gonna be an issue.
So, they'll be taken care of.
Okay, Tony?
Um, in a meeting that I spoke at, I'm gonna clarify that I'm here talking as Tony Randall, Gags Bay resident, now as the chief of police right now. One of my questions, and I think Mrs. Wolf answered that question about how long these banners would stay up. I'm gonna tell you that I see these banners a lot. I'm gonna tell you that they're starting to deteriorate. I'm gonna tell you there are some on Main Street that got cleaned off, the utility poles. I picked them up. What I'm gonna tell you is be very careful when you tend them because they are brittle.
Especially this time of year.
The color from them will get off of the banner and onto your hands and clothing because I experienced them.
Oh, okay.
One of the ones that knocked off the poles.
Yep.
So, when the big trucks on Main Street are pulling over and they knock them off the pole, who pays to have that replaced or is that just like the end of the story?
Maybe you guys saw that happen in front of the common man's store.
Yeah, that's something we haven't ever discussed, but probably should.
And Harold spoke that they aren't meant to be handled a lot. And I thought they should... They were supposed to be laid flat, not... Because if you roll them up, that's just gonna, you know, fatigue the material even more.
I think there was one other one that we lost as well. Leighton's Corner down there, there was one that was in the corner there that got clipped by a moving truck.
And this is news to me. I didn't realize we'd lost them, but clearly something that we need to address, you know, especially if people have paid for them, so.
It's nice that they're hanging out on Main Street, but you gotta be conscious that they're on the poles sticking out over parking spaces.
Yeah.
And you have walk trucks that come in to park and everything, so. So, those people that did their advertising, they're...
Out of luck.
They're out of luck, I guess. They should have picked a better pole.
We're above 13.6.
I think that was the issue. When DPW did it, they could only reach so high with the front end loader where the electric department...
The bucket truck would go higher.
Yes, so the electric department did down by Steve Phillips' house and that area, and I think all those banners are a bit higher.
Yep.
Well, I think there's a rule about how close they can be up that pole because of all the utilities.
Can't put them the other way.
But it was the difference between what you...
The ones on Main Street, you can turn them in towards, you know, this way instead of sticking them out in the road, put them... Turn them, you saw the truck going.
Yep.
Good idea.
Instead of going this way.
Yep.
It's not just put on the, you know, the pole bracket, which is... Before you had a fiddly to put them up, to say the least. The guys would drop the screws and, you know, they had to hold them in place, you need to drill and whatnot. So, it was done, but none of them had a smile on their face after doing a lot of them, especially on a windy day. But there was a lot of trial and error, and, you know, it came out well, but there was a learning curve.
Yeah.
Because they replaced what these, what the old flags of this day, remember?
I don't remember.
The American flags, most of them were wrapped around a pole and...
Yeah, yeah, they were bad.
Yes, they couldn't do that because you can't... They can't spit out.
Right, right. But we... Craig, we usually replace the covered bridges with the Christmas wreaths, right? We do that every season.
We do it anyway, yeah.
Okay, so you do have experience with that?
Yep, and the spring will... We'll put the covered bridges back up and the Christmas ones.
All right. So, Jane, I just would suggest you just give it a little more thought, and I'm sure there's a win-win for this. You know, I'm not trying to stifle your thing.
Yeah, no, I'll do more homework for the actual banner part of it.
All right, appreciate that.
Yeah, that's great.
And it wasn't a fundraiser when Norm did it.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know, but I need more.
Understood. Okay, you want to quickly go over your budget?
Yes, one of the things is we did a warrant article for to request 15,000 this year. And the breakdown on the budget, I just want to kind of go over it. The fire department is estimating $4,000 for the week. Police department is 8,000 for the week. And the fireworks is gonna be 8,000.
Okay.
So, that right there is already brought us to 20,000, and we've already paid five to the fireworks.
Okay.
So, that's down to three.
Okay.
So, that's where we came up with the idea to request 15. I also did more of a breakdown, though, so you could see that our estimated income, like the Victoria Books, we figure it's gonna be about 900.
Yep.
The Christmas orders would be about 1,300. The mugs is about 1,000. The pens will only be about 100. Calendars is about 800. License plates will be 1,000. The utility pole banners, we're hoping, based on the numbers that... My understanding, the estimate I got, the sheet I got showed 66 banners that went up.
A couple of them were added on afterwards, I think.
Okay, so I've kind of estimated on what we'd be making on that, and that'll be 8,000. We are allowing for... Existing ones that are going up won't need new brackets. New ones will need brackets. So, we know there's some that we won't make as much profit as the ones that are existing.
Okay.
And then we have the two more that 5,000 got last year requesting 15 this year. We're gonna be doing a brochure. It's actually gonna be a little booklet. It's gonna be more of the people of our town, and it's to... I'll have the events in it. It'll have a map of where the events are gonna take place. And it's gonna be have where like, kind of like a way a yearbook is, like you could buy one line for $5 to wish the town well or something, or you could buy a quarter page, and it'll be open to people, individuals, or whatever.
Okay.
So, we're hoping we can raise about $4,000 with that.
Okay.
And then we're hoping also to do the banners down in the ballpark, like they do for the Fourth of July as well.
Okay.
So, our total budget, expense-wise, the Civil War Ball is estimated to be about $7,500. That includes the train, the rooms up there, the group, and everything like that. The cemetery walks is no fee. The secession play, there'll be no fee. The street dance is $1,400, which includes the group and porta potties. And the parade is a little over $9,000 for all the groups. And the 150th Celebration Day in the Park, we figure for a little over 4,000, and that includes 11,000 for the porta potties in there for there.
1,100.
1,100.
11,000, sorry. 11,000.
No, but it's a difference.
1,100. 1,100, yeah. 1,100.
Only if they're staying in the hall.
That's a lot of porta potties.
No luxury mode.
Yes, exactly. So, is there any question on any of the items or...
No. It's a lot of work.
Thank you.
A lot of work.
I have a question.
Yes, Harold.
Under the parade, I'm kind of a budget guy. Don't know if I'm seeing this right, the pipe and drum, the pipes and drum and the machoos, are they performing more than just this parade? Because I was looking at it, that's 18% of your whole week's budget in like 10 minutes.
No, that's what they cost. That's what those groups cost. It's the whole parade, I mean, it'll be the fire station down.
I've been to a couple of parades. That's just why I'm asking, because it's like 17 and a half, 18% of your whole budget in like 15 minutes.
I know, I mean, the problem you have is people... The problem is you have a lot of people saying, you know, we like parades like we used to have, blah, 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 and so you get into all these groups that people suggest, and I, you know, they need to realize, they do cost.
Yeah, they do.
So, no, that is exactly what they... The Manitok Drum and Five comes from Connecticut, and they're the oldest pipe and drum group in the country, the ones that do the wholeness parade every year. I do have a letter in to Merritt Village requesting a possible grant through Jill, her local grant line.
The community grant.
And, yeah, and she knows this group, so we're hoping. But I didn't want to put it.
No, no, you can't. You can't.
Right.
Any other questions from the board? No? Okay. Is this a budget we need to approve?
I guess my request would be if you could recommend, if you would support the warrant articles, is that something that...
Yeah.
We are going to discuss all the warrant articles. And that, we will take a vote on that.
Okay, that's why I wanted to present this as a request.
Yep, no, we will take a vote on that shortly.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, yep. Okay. DOT tap grant, Charlie?
All right, this is the next step in our Transportation Alternative Program grant. This is... Basically, this is NHDOT saying, we're good to go with the scope and fee that KV Partners created. We're good to go with the fee. In order to start sending payment, DOT had to get formal approval from Federal Highway. They got that. Here it is for the board to sign. And once you approve it tonight, we will send it off to KV Partners, and they'll get going on the sidewalk project.
Any estimate is when they're gonna start and what they're gonna do first? I know they talked...
Surveying, he'll do surveying first. I don't have an estimate as when they will, but he's already got the surveyor ready to go.
Yep. Nice. You know, I read through the proposal, and it looks pretty complete and extensive. Anyone have any questions on it? Is there a motion to approve this as written?
I'll make that motion to approve as written.
Is there a second?
Did you want me to sign it, or did you want the chair to sign it?
We'll discuss that after we approve it. All those in favor of approving this contract, please say aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, a motion to have the town administrator sign it?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Charlie, you're free to sign that. Thank you. Look forward to the work beginning. This is a big, exciting step for Ashland.
It's a lot of work on, and like, at the beginning with all this attachments, I had to do all this work. They're very specific as what we have to do.
And my guess is for the 150th, for their celebration, there's probably not gonna be any construction going on this summer, so. I think it'll all be, it'll all be design work and, you know, easements and everything, so just in case you're worried.
I'll be suicidal.
Okay.
Construction, so everyone knows, the construction probably won't begin until spring 2019. They'll take probably till about September, October to get the design completed, but we should have public hearings all along the way and open for public input and stuff.
Great. Okay, any other new business? Hearing none. Select board items. Before we get into the warrant, I, we discussed the last time, a prior code of ethics that had been signed by a prior board that consisted of Norm and Steve and Jeanette and I. Charlie sent out that signed copy. And I suggested that we re-sign it, but I don't think we need to make it mandatory. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at it. You know, it covers, it covers confidential information, misuse of position, disclosure, fairness, enforcement, and so forth. I think it pretty much covers everything. So, I am going to sign it and I will pass it along. If anybody feels uncomfortable signing it, then I say don't.
Okay.
And this is 16 January. Now, the town warrant. There are several articles that we have yet to discuss, some petitions that came in after our meeting and some additional things. The first, while Craig is here, the first Article 11, to see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter into a five-year lease purchase agreement for $189,590 for the purpose of purchasing a four-wheel drive loader for the Public Works Department and to raise an appropriate sum of $27,142 for the first-year payment for that purpose. Majority vote required. Is this going to have an escape clause?
I was just about ready to say that.
Yeah. So Craig, do you want to give us the rationale for this? I know you did and you presented us with the estimate.
And before, we will add that language to the article.
Okay.
That this does have an escape clause.
Okay.
Craig confirmed that today with John Deere.
Okay.
Yep. So we'll have one. Just so everybody else knows, the loader's a 1980. It's the same loader that Mark Ober drove, Tim drove, and now I'm driving it. Every time we have a storm, I have to put about a quart of oil in it, a half a gallon of antifreeze and maybe a quart of hydraulic fluid. So like I told the board, just environmentally alone, it's leaking fluid everywhere, all over the streets and hills of Ashland. So just that alone, we probably should get rid of it. It blows smoke out of its white, black smoke. It struggles to get up the hills.
Do we have hills in Ashland?
Yeah, a little, some. It's redlined, so it's going for all it's worth to try to get up the hill. So it's just, it's time to get rid of it. And some people may wonder why we're getting another loader. And we need two of them because that one plows. During summertime, we have one loader sitting at the yard so it can load gravel into the trucks when we go out and do ditch work and things like that. So we need two of them, especially if one breaks down, we have a backup. So last year, I think in April, we paid off the current loader we have. So we're taking that same payment that we used, that we were paying before, and we're going to continue that on. So it's kind of level funding our budget and keeping the things going. So nothing's going to go off. It's actually a little less than what we were paying. So we went down a little bit on our payment, which is good. So it'll be another five years lease purchase.
I have any questions from the board? I will entertain a motion to recommend or not recommend Article 11.
I'll make a motion to recommend Article 11.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of recommending Article 11, the new loader, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Four to nothing. Thank you, Craig. Okay. The next one is a petition article, Article 25. Shall we rescind the provisions of RSA 40:13, known as SB 2, as adopted by the Town of Ashland on March 9, 1999, so that the official ballot will no longer be used for voting on all questions, but only for the election of officers and certain other questions for which the official ballot is required by state law? As you recall, we had this as a, as a select board warrant article. We deleted that because it came in as a petition and we are required to put petitions in. So I will ask for a vote to recommend or not recommend Article 25.
She already said no to this one.
No, we already, I think we had it in as a select board article. And I think our previous vote was in favor. Is that correct, Charlie?
Yes.
Do you remember the vote?
It was in favor to rescind it.
It was in favor to rescind it.
Yeah. Well, in favor to put it on the warrant.
In favor to put it on the warrant.
To recommend it on the warrant.
And we recommended, yeah. Okay.
So now we're voting on whether we want to rescind it or...
No, we're, it's the same, it's the same article, but now it's a petition rather than a select board. So we have to re-vote on whether or not we recommend this article.
Okay.
Okay? So that's why I'm looking for a vote to either recommend or not recommend.
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of recommending petition Article 25, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Okay. Three to one. Okay. Article 26, petition article. Shall we adopt the provisions of RSA 40:14B to delegate the determination of the default budget to the municipal budget committee, which has been adopted under RSA 32:14, as provided for by RSA 40:14-B, default budget determined by budget committee? Is there a motion to recommend or not recommend Article 26?
Could you explain it a little bit further?
Many years ago, when I was on the budget committee, the budget committee did the default budget. But then we found out that the town had voted, not voted sufficiently to have the budget committee do it. So then it reverted back to the select board. And the select board has been doing it for the last four years or at least.
It was 2011.
Okay. So we had been doing it. Now this petition says, give it back to the budget committee. So that's what this article is saying, for us to give the default budget determination back to the budget committee. So, a motion to recommend or not recommend?
I'll make a motion to not recommend.
Is there a second? I'll, I'll second that. Okay, discussion. My reason for not recommending it is that the select board has firsthand knowledge of our finances. We work with our finance officer, we work with our contracts, and we know better than, because we deal with it on a daily basis. And I think that's where it belongs, but that's just my opinion.
I think there's some gray area there that we actually discussed at our last budget committee meeting is whereas, yes, you needed the supermajority vote that one year, 2011, even though it was prepared by the budget committee. But then you start looking at things like, okay, well, what about the commissioners? Who prepares their default? Because they always prepare theirs.
Right. And that's another whole issue.
Exactly. So if you put all of this in one basket, you're dumping two commissions worth of budgets and the town worth of budget and the school worth of budget onto the budget committee and saying, here, you deal with it.
Yep. That's a good point, Harold. Casey, any thoughts?
I mean, like you said, we have, we have better workings of what's going on. And the department heads report to us at these meetings anyway, so we have more understanding of what they need to expend them.
Right. Any other comments? All right. All those in favor of not recommending Article 26?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. So we are not recommending this by vote of four to nothing. Article 27, petition article. Shall the Town of Ashland elect the planning board by ballot? Do I have a, a motion to recommend or not recommend this article?
I'll make a motion to not recommend this article.
Is there a second?
No second.
Discussion.
I think we already voted against something like this, right?
Well, we did. We voted against the Z B A, which is, yeah. Okay. All those in favor of not recommending Article 27?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Article 28, this is the same thing. Shall the Town of Ashland's zoning board of adjustment members be elected as prescribed by RSA 673:3 and RSA 673:5? A motion to recommend or not recommend?
I'll make a motion to not recommend.
A second?
No second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of not recommending? Aye, opposed? Okay. Petition article. Shall the Town of Ashland adopt a community rights-based ordinance to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents and ecosystems of Ashland, New Hampshire, by establishing a community bill of rights which prohibits activities and protects projects that violate the Bill of Rights and which provides for enforcement of the Bill of Rights against corporations and governments engaged in those activities and projects? Do I have a, a motion to recommend or not recommend Article 29?
Make a motion to not recommend.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion. Charlie, could you please give us the legal?
So I sent this to legal counsel and, because I know there's some concerns with the Board of Selectmen, I know there's some concerns from the public that have expressed it in the office. You know, I'll try my best to simplify this. But as a town, we simply cannot vote an ordinance in that says permits and license are illegal. We can't disregard court rulings. You can't waive civil and criminal liability. These are some things we just cannot do as a town by just taking a vote. You know, we also, we can't, what this sort of implies, secede from the union. We have existing laws that have been in place for quite a long time. It's not the fact that we can't change law, it's, this isn't the right place for it. These are constitutional laws that are requested to get changed. They happen at a different branch of the government, not ours.
Any other comments?
Something up.
This basically is a petition for home rule, and it is not a home rule state. As you said, it's not based in the Constitution. We as selectmen took an oath of office to uphold the laws of the state of New Hampshire and the Constitution of New Hampshire. So, you know, I personally couldn't vote for anything that would violate my oath of office. There are many subjective things in here that concern me, like who would be the judge? And when you start giving rights to ecosystems, including things that grow, that crawl in the ground, you know, you're pitting neighbor against neighbor potentially. I know that there is an illusion out there that this would stop Northern Pass. And it would be used as a weapon against Northern Pass if it were enforced. However, you can understand that if that should happen, the ensuing legal bills will be astronomical and it would be the undoing of the town, as far as I'm concerned. But it also allows for the right of citizens to sue each other for violating their health and well-being. And a lot of that is very subjective. It also addresses that the courts shall vote liberally. Well, you can't tell the courts what to do. No ordinance can tell the courts how to behave and how to vote. So there are just many issues in this nine-page ordinance that really concern me. One other thing that really concerns me is that a lot of people who signed this petition warrant article, and as Mr. Felton pointed out, the warrant article itself, that'll be on the ballot, is sunshine, roses, and lollipops. And, you know, who could say we don't want to protect our health and well-being? But these people were not necessarily shown this nine pages. And I know for a fact that some, at least some, were not. And that really concerns me, that there was a delusion. Either they were promised it would stop Northern Pass or it's going to be good for everybody. So those, I mean, I have very, very serious concerns about this. So that's my opinion. I won't take any more time. Any other comments?
My only concern is that if we're, we're looking at this and we're giving our opinion on this, that we should also err on the side of caution further on down the line on question three of the zone ordinance. Because you have one that's stating that their truth is in the Bill of Rights of the United States of America. And the other one is saying that they're erring on the side of the Constitution. So the last time you had someone trying to play the Bill of Rights against the Constitution, it got really bloody. I don't think that we should back either of them if that's the avenue that we're going down.
Well, I think we should take one, each one of it, in isolation from the other.
Down the road, if you're going to support one, just be aware that it's pitting one of those...
Well, we will discuss that one when we get to it. That's what I think. Any other comments?
I didn't, I didn't understand what you said.
You're confused. Well, I'm, you know, that's why I said we'll discuss that article when we get to it. And he's free to make those arguments when we get to it. So...
I mean, this is just straight against state law. So there's no, it's just, I don't, I don't see any benefit to this. This is just us that are, we're just going to go to court and lose because the courts don't have to. It's silly. I can do...
Well, you know, again, this goes beyond Northern Pass. I think that's the carrot that people have held out. But if we adopt this kind of an ordinance, which is basically a home rule ordinance, we're setting ourselves, you can't take conversations now, Kathleen, I'm sorry. This is a select board discussion after the meeting. I'd love to hear what you have to say.
It's a little late for Northern Pass.
Yeah. So...
They're already in, you know...
Harold, I have a question for you. When you signed this petition, did you see the nine pages?
Yeah, we were all sent a copy of it, right?
We were? Okay. You, because you were sent a copy.
Yeah.
But, so they, when they came around to get your signature, did they present these nine pages?
They were all sent to us, yes.
To everybody that signed it?
Yes. There was copies at the, at the meeting we had, there was copies of the contract there.
Well, okay, I know two people who never saw these nine pages. So that's, I was just asking. Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor of not recommending Article 29, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four to nothing?
Abstained.
You abstained? Okay. Four to, three to one abstention. Petition article. Shall the Town adopt the Conflict of Interest Ordinance as drafted below in accordance with RSA 3139, Conflict of Interest Ordinances? Charlie, I have a question. It says as below. Is the below in the article, it's in the warrant itself, or is...
We will print out copies.
But it will be in the, would it be on the ballot?
No.
I mean, we'll have copies of everything, but it will not be on the ballot?
No, it'll be at, the copies of the ordinance will be at the deliberative.
Okay. But what I'm asking is, when people take this ballot to the booth, they will, unless they bring a copy, it will not...
There'll be copies, there should be copies at vote day two.
What, they'll have to pick up a copy to refer to it? Okay. Just asking. Is there a motion to recommend or not recommend this Conflict of Interest Ordinance?
Make a motion to don't recommend it.
Is there a second?
I didn't hear what he said.
He said not recommend.
I'll second it.
Discussion. I think we did discuss this actually at our last meeting and voted not to put it, because it was presented as, as a select board item. And we voted not to include it. So this is now a petition. My reading of it, there's a lot of stuff that I can object to, you know, clearly Conflict of Interest results when there's financial gain or when you're getting gifts from somebody.
Right.
The one, one paragraph that I truly object to is that whole thing about families. And clearly, one can understand why a conflict of interest could arise with a family, but those are perfectly obvious. But it lists mother, father, sister, brother, aunt, uncle, grandmother, grandfather, niece, nephew, husband. What about stepbrothers and stepsisters and best friends? I mean, you know, I find the whole thing insulting. This is a town of very dedicated volunteers and we all work very hard. And to then put such severe restrictions on, you know, and I know families participate in the town. And we've got a lot of families who have a long history of participating in the town. And I think this is, is really insulting to put that piece on the ballot.
I think this belongs in a town of 19,750, not a town of 1,975.
I think you're absolutely right. I think you're absolutely right.
There's not enough families in this town to not have everybody involved.
Right. And we want, we want to encourage more people to step up, not discourage people. And this could turn away a lot of people.
Yeah. Or to be on different committees.
Yeah.
Being able to be on different committees.
Exactly. And again, I said two weeks ago, I'll say it again. If anybody has a specific concern about any one of us, please present your concerns and they will be addressed. You know, and, and that's why I wanted us to sign this ethics thing, because it doesn't call it Conflict of Interest, but it basically says we're, we're standing up for what's right. So, all right. All those in favor of not recommending Conflict of Interest, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four to nothing. Okay. Petition warrant article. Grafton County Senior Citizens Council. Estimated tax impact, three cents. Shall the voters raise and appropriate $6,000 to Grafton County Senior Citizens Council, Inc., for services for Ashland residents in 2018? These services include congregant meals, home-delivered meals, transportation, outreach, support, service link, support, and more. In FY 2017, Grafton County Senior Citizens Council provided services for 102 Ashland residents, and Service Link provided services for 45 residents. Cost of providing these services was $59,636.51. Is there a vote to recommend or not recommend Article 31?
Can, take a step back to Article 30. I mean, I wanted to make a quick comment about this ordinance. Just section, in particular, Section C. So everyone knows, elected officials cannot be disqualified by another elected official. There is no jurisdiction for an elected official to take a vote that disqualifies someone. The jurisdiction lies with Superior Court.
Okay.
So just wanted to clarify that for the board and everyone in the public. Once you read, if you haven't already read this.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charlie. I appreciate that. Back to Grafton County Senior Citizens Council. Is there a vote to recommend or not recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Said motion.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Petition warrant article. Tri-County Community Action, Grafton County. Estimated tax impact, one cent. To see if the Town of Ashland will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,107 for Tri-County Community Action, Grafton County, for the purpose of continuing services for the Fuel Assistance Program for the residents of Ashland. Motion to recommend or not recommend?
Move said motion.
To recommend?
Yes.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor of recommending? Aye.
Aye.
Petition article. Genesis Behavioral Health. Estimated tax impact, one cent. To see if the Town of Ashland will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,500 to support emergency services provided by the Genesis Behavioral Health to the residents of Ashland. A motion to recommend or not recommend? A motion to recommend or not recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of recommending Article 13? Aye. Opposed? Okay, Article 34, petitioned. Communities for Alcohol and Drug-Free Youth, CADDY. Estimated tax impact, nothing. To see if the Town of Ashland will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,000 to support the Communities for Alcohol and Drug-Free Youth, a nonprofit organization serving Ashland and nearby towns. Motion to recommend or not recommend?
Make a motion to recommend.
Second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Petition article. Pembroke Asset River Local Advisory Committee, PRLAC. Estimated tax impact, nothing. To see if the Town of Ashland will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $400 for the Pembroke Asset River Local Advisory Committee, PRLAC, for the purpose of continuing services of reviewing applications for development along the Pembroke River Corridor, as well as providing water sampling to the Department of Environmental Services and acting as an intervenor in the state, New Hampshire State Energy Commission's review of the Northern Pass project in order to lessen the impact of this product, project for residents of Ashland. Motion to recommend or not recommend?
Make said motion.
To recommend? Second?
I'll second, and I just want to say that I sit on this committee as a liaison, and it's a, it's, to me, it's a very, very important committee, especially for our town. We've been an intervenor in the Northern Pass project since October of 2015, which is a lot longer than, than most interveners have been, have been active in it. And we just, we just barely roll that up, as I'll give in my report, but it's, it's very important to all the towns along the river.
And we, we appreciate your service on the committee, Lee. All those, any other discussion? All those in favor of recommending Article 35, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Petition. Voices Against Violence. Estimated impact, one cent. To see if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,000 for the fiscal year 2017, 2018, to support Voices, Voices Against Violence, a nonprofit crisis center for shelter, providing emergency shelter, court, and hospital accompaniment, and, and general support to women, men, and children who are victims of domestic and sexual violence and stalking. Motion to recommend or not recommend?
Motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of recommending Article 36? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Article 37, petitioned. Ashland 150th Committee. Impact, six cents. To see if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $15,000 to help defray the cost of the 150th celebration of the Town planned by the Ashland 150th Committee, which committee has been established by the Board of Selectmen. Motion to recommend or not recommend?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All those in favor of recommending Article 37? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Is that it? Do we need to vote on all of the zoning things that we don't? Okay. All right.
But you have a groundwater protection ordinance.
Oh, yes, yes, okay, that's the next one, yes. Planning Board Groundwater Protection Ordinance. Do we have a motion to recommend or not recommend to this ordinance?
I recommend it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any further questions for Mardine?
Yes.
Yes.
How big of an area does this encompass from the wellhead? If you were to take a rope or string and go in circumference of the wellhead, how big is this? Are we talking a mile?
Um, no, I don't know. The back page of your, of the ordinance had a map. I don't know what the distance is. But it's this portion, this is the upper end of West Street. So it's from, the well is about, is right there. Okay, so I don't know the distance from, the longest distance, and the water sewer plant is actually way down at the far end of this, this piece.
My only concern about that was your future mitigation of any, when you had on there about your salt storage and so forth, as far as figuring out what is residual that you're dealing with, with both the salt and the cyanide coming off the interstate, and what is new. That's the only problem I saw for you in the future, and I know that's a lot of headache for you, so that's why I asked, how big of a scope it was.
Yeah, I know water sewers continue to look at this old issue. It's not, it's, it's something they're struggling with DES to try to find a solution.
Yeah, we just, we know that with DES, that, you know, if you have DES and DOT, and then you have little old us in Ashland.
Yeah.
It's David and Goliath, and I just, you know, I support what you're doing, I just want to make sure that, you know, you have the good fight, know what you're getting into.
Yeah. Got it.
Any other questions or comments?
Board doesn't vote on?
We don't vote on it?
Recommendation for zoning.
Okay, never mind. All right, again, thank you, Mardine, I guess I could have put you at the end.
It's all right.
That's all right. Any other Select Board items? Any liaison reports?
I do.
Yes, Lee?
Let me see, honey. The Planning Board has held a few public hearings in January on the warrant amendments to the zoning ordinance. Hearings were held on January 3rd and the 10th. They mainly referred to approving signs on the Bed and Breakfast property, such as enter signs and exit signs, and the reading of the groundwater protection ordinance that we just discussed. This is to add security and further protection to our, our wellhead drinking aquifer section near I-93 and the river. When a butter, Alex Ray, was represented at the last hearing by Mo LeFrenier, he wanted assurance that the ordinance wouldn't totally prohibit certain types of development in that, one of our last of our industrial commercial zones, and he was assured it would not be totally prohibited. And Mo also asked about the several vacancies on the Planning Board, and wouldn't any young people step up? And I answered him that we were the young people.
Good answer. I love it.
A site plan review was unanimously approved for JSG Realty LLC in the commercial industrial zone for a medical cannabis-growing facility. The Board was highly assured that the building would have the highest state-of-the-art security, and it was recommended with the approval of our police chief. And our electric commissioner, one of the reasons they picked our site was for our electric rates. This is planned to be up and running within nine months. A site plan waiver was approved for Morris Guyatt, 130 Main Street, the former Northway Bank, for his heating and plumbing business.
You said Morris, it's Maurice.
Oh, Maurice. Guyatt, 130 Main Street, former Northway Bank, for his heating and plumbing business. He wants to wall in the former drive-through area, which was approved. And a bond, a bond renewal was granted Berry-Gaw for use on interior roads of the river edge house development on Levitt Hill. Heritage Commission publicity for the L-Chip grant article for renovating the Town Hall was discussed. The procedure for issuing a $14,000 check request for fireworks by the July 4th committee was explained, as we discussed tonight. The Home Photo Project will begin on the Commission's Facebook page with pictures of the commissioners' homes and families for examples, and David Rule will give PowerPoint presentation for the renovation on the Town Hall. Pembroke River Local Advisory Committee, the PRLAC team of Barry and Gretchen Draper and Max Stamp finished our Northern Pass Site Evaluation Statement with a post-hearing memo. If anyone wants to, to see that memo, I'd be happy to email it along, because it is very interesting, and Northern Pass has two weeks now to respond to that memo that just came out. PRLAC began the site process and research in October of 2015 to protect all the towns affected on the river, from Pittsburgh to Deerfield, including Ashland, representing a large stretch of Ashland along the proposed route. Wetland permit applications, pre-trial written testimony, supplemental written testimony and issues were presented finally after 70 days of testimony and exhibits, exhibits which just finished at the end of this year, December. And I'd like to credit Gretchen Draper of New Hampton, who was primarily responsible for all the organizing and formatting and the legal support for our statements to represent, to represent our Town of Ashland. And her contribution was huge over the past two years, and PRLAC is now known to 150 other intervenors, and has shown to be an influential power in this Northern Pass project.
Thank you.
The end.
Very thorough update, Lee, I appreciate that. Any other liaison reports?
Yes.
Yes.
I had several meetings last week with the Budget Committee. We had a few hearings, and we're closing out our season on budget. Things are going forward quite well. We had our school hearing, we had our town budget hearing, and then we subsequently had a meet, another meeting afterwards, about three and a half hours into it. I'd say we're probably about 85, 90% concluded with all of our work, and it's a big yay on that. But the budget came in within 3,000 of last year, which is, you know, something, you know, out there, people look at it and say, oh, well, you know, it's, it's $3,000 more than default, but when you look at all of the, the work that's put into it, and the gains of that $3,000, I hope people really know the work that's put into it.
So the 3,000, the final budget is 3,000 more than the default? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Harold, I appreciate your work on the Budget Committee.
Yes.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, in that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, public comments. Yes, I promised, I'm sorry, public comments.
I just have one, going back to the right space ordinance.
Thank you, Susan.
Whether, whether I agree with any or all or none of the content of it, every ordinance that has ever been put in place in this town, whether it's the ordinance under the Selectmen or whether it's the zoning ordinance, or even the, the regulations that the Planning Board runs with, have always been gone through a process of public hearings where the, the public has the right to speak on and lend the content. This is take it or leave it, especially if you haven't read it. And that's not the will of the people, if it's one document that is just put out there without any kind of, and I, I don't think that it qualifies that a, a meeting in the common man on a Saturday to discuss what this thing was even about was anything close to a meeting that allowed people input on it.
Thank you, Susan. Yes, Kathleen?
I was gonna simplify it even more. It's unenforceable. The Town deserves more than have to go through the warrant article process, have people vote on something that cannot be enforced. It, it looks, when you, I had the same issues, and that's the same thing. I heard that people that signed the petition did not see the nine pages, which is so flawed. And it appears to be a template that the, that the Town of Ashland was inserted in where you needed to put a town. It's not crafted for Ashland. It even, it has punitive issue, it wants to punish people, it wants to punish towns that might affect us, so it's, it's, well, I'm gonna say, it's a hot mess, let's put it that way. I think the Town deserves more. The, the C, make sure I get it right, the C H E R 19, that's the bill that Representative Miguelori can speak about, that doesn't even go into committee until February 6.
Right.
So it has a long process ahead of it, and the final, if it gets through the whole protocol and process, it could be on the November ballot as a state constitutional amendment to first vote on. Until then, if, if interested people want to work on a tailored, right-based ordinance fit the needs of Ashland in hopes that this bill does pass, perhaps that's what the group should focus on. But what was, what's on our warrant now is, like I said, it's unenforceable. It gets people's hopes up. It's, because you wish it to be, doesn't make it so.
Thank you, Kathleen. Any other comments? Seeing none? Now I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll do that.
Is there a second?